Long since we've had a meeting, so we're a little rusty here, so we're gonna get started. If I could please call the meeting to order with a roll call?
President Demos.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Kenwood.
Here.
Trustee Ladisack.
Here.
Trustee O'Shea.
Here.
Trustee Senate.
Here.
If Bob Greenberg can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The next is Audience Participation. We'll do first the proclamation and recognition of the retirement of Public Works Utility Superintendent Bob Greenberg. Bob, if you could please step up there with Catherine. Catherine, if you could please read the proclamation into the record.
Whereas after thirty-two years and forty-six weeks of serving the Village of Glen Ellen, Bob Greenberg, Public Works Utility Superintendent, is retiring. And whereas Bob began his career with Public Works on March 12, 1984, as a water utility service worker and was promoted through the ranks. And whereas Bob worked in an operating role as Glen Ellen transitioned, obtaining its water supply from Well Water to Lake Michigan. And whereas Bob has served as the Certified Operator Responsible Charge for Glen Ellen's water distribution system for more than twenty years and has been the Utility Superintendent for fifteen of the last twenty years, over which more than fifteen billion gallons of water were distributed through Glen Ellen. And whereas the characteristics exhibited by Bob throughout his career was his absolute commitment to maintaining a safe, reliable, and high-quality water supply and delivery system for the residents of Glen Ellen. And whereas Bob is a one-of-a-kind with a unique and thoughtful perspective on every aspect of life and work, and his demeanor, sense of humor, expertise, and institutional knowledge will be sorely missed by staff and residents. Now therefore, I, Alexander W. Demos, President of the Village of Glen Ellen, and on behalf of the Village Board of Trustees, do hereby extend our heartiest congratulations to Bob Greenberg on the occasion of his retirement and wish him many happy and healthy retirement years.
Thank you. Thank you, Village Board, President Demos. Welcome to Glen Ellen. Great time. Hey, Bob, I want to say personally that I've enjoyed our relationship. I've been impressed by your ethics and your work ethics. It's been an outstanding relationship with the village, and you're gonna be very missed. So, thank you.
This work in your place, I highly recommend.
The next item is open. This is the point that if anyone would like to speak about any item that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. And Catherine, do we have anyone signed up? We don't? Is there anyone that would like to speak? Thank you. The next is the Consent Agenda. I want to say that number eleven is being pulled just for a little bit of future consideration. It'll be back on the agenda likely at the first meeting in February. I think we're going to do that. And would any trustees like to remove any item from tonight's consent agenda for individual considerations? Any trustees like to ask any questions about any item on the consent agenda tonight? Wonderful. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda omitting item eleven?
You may, Mr. President. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including items number one through thirteen, excluding item number eleven. And this is also to include payable and vouchers totaling $4,657,244.61.
Second. Second, is there any public comments on the consent agenda? May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Ladisack.
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee O'Shea.
Yes.
Trustee Senate.
Wonderful. The consent agenda carries. Lee Marks, I believe that you wanted to get up and present the plaque for item number twelve.
Yes. Thank you. We're not sure, is Joanne McDonald here this evening? Well, we'll still talk about it. This is a gal who was at 250 Regent who lives in a mid-century modern ranch that was built in '57. She did an outstanding job of preserving this house, restoring it, very, very meticulous workmanship. So she came to the meeting, and you can see a picture of it on the overhead there. But it just did a great job, so we were thrilled to give her the award, and it brings a house to us that -- we have a lot of older houses in town, but this is nice to get a mid-century modern ranch involved. It has a Glen Ellen historic landmark, so we're very appreciative of what work that she did. Thank you very much, and we'll make sure that she gets her plaque. That's what the plaque looks like for a designated landmark, so we'll make sure it gets over to Joanne McDonald.
Wonderful. Thank you, Lee.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it. The next item, item F. Director Holsberg, would you like to introduce the topic?
Thank you, President Demos. So, this is a request by Clark Real Estate, and they are the owner of the Roosevelt Glen Corporate Center. And that property is on the overhead screen, and it's outlined in red. And it is surrounded by Roosevelt Road on the north, which is up here, Route 53 on the east, Pershing on the south, and Nickelway on the west. And they are requesting approvals this evening for a zoning map amendment, a planned unit development, a special use permit, a major subdivision, vacation of easements, variations to PUD standards, and a variety of other things in order to accommodate the construction of a new Panera restaurant with a drive-through on the property. The site currently contains seven office buildings, two of which are vacant and proposed to be demolished. And in their place will be constructed two new buildings. They are proposing to subdivide that land into two sites. The Panera Bread is proposed here on the east lot, and on the west lot, there will be a future, as yet unnamed, tenant. The remaining five office buildings on the site are intended to continue to be leased out for office purposes at this time. I am gonna put on the overhead screen an elevation of the site, color elevation with some landscaping proposed. They have put together a great site plan for the property. And there will be two access points to the property from the Panera Lot Two. On the west side, it will be a right-in, right-out, and on the east side, it'll just be a right-out. As part of the project, the petitioner is required to construct a sidewalk along Nickel Road and Pershing Avenue, within the public right-of-way. And that sidewalk will benefit residents of the village and the public, as well as users of the proposed development. And therefore, the staff is recommending that the village reimburse the petitioner from the Roosevelt Road TIP funds for the construction of the actual sidewalk and the retaining wall in an amount not to exceed $52,000. You may recall that we did a similar reimbursement program for the Oberweis restaurant that was built a little bit further west. And this is an eligible TIP expense. The Plan Commission on December 8th did review the request, and they voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend approval, subject to conditions that are listed in your memo. And the ARC also reviewed the requests, and by unanimous vote of eight to zero, also recommended approval. We have three members of the Clark Development Team here this evening. They are excited to be moving forward, and either they or I can answer any questions you might have.
Are there any trustee questions? I know we have some members of the public that would like to speak. No trustee questions. Catherine, why don't we listen to the public, Mark, and then -- or do you have questions, Mark?
Oh, not right now.
Okay. Catherine, you wanna call who signed up?
Ms. Pat Corey. Hi. I had come tonight to get information. I had not intended to speak, so please forgive me if I sound a little disjointed. I happen to be a homeowner in the Kingsbrook Glen Townhouse Development that is within buffer zone to this property. I realize that signs have been up for a while, but I did not actually go to the planning site and take a close look until much of the development had been done. I did speak with John today because I am within the buffer zone, and I know I never received any mail notification, and I have a feeling that some of my neighbors didn't either. My concerns are how this is gonna affect, obviously, our development, but I think there are other townhome developments, two other townhome developments in this area that also are gonna be greatly impacted by, not necessarily this first initial piece, but what's gonna happen with this tract of land as a whole. We have concerns -- I have Paul here with me, who is also in the development, and although we haven't formally gotten together, I think we have concerns anybody would have with potential impact of a property this large being developed right across the street from us. I'm not sure, maybe someone here can answer, is the entire tract of land gonna be zoned commercial? Is that the intention? Will it be done on individual pieces? And we'll get a chance to speak a little bit more on this. I know as I'm looking at the plans, they're talking about egress from Panera being able to go make a right turn on Roosevelt Road, but fact of the matter is probably many of the customers will be Glen Ellen residents, and so they'll be needing to head west on Roosevelt, so they'll come out onto Napole, which is gonna greatly increase traffic, especially in evening hours. So we do have concerns with increased traffic, with noise. In light of the fact that there are so many vacant buildings already on Roosevelt Road, I don't quite understand why this property is being rezoned. In particular, the Dominic site is like right across the street. So I know this is kind of late in the stages, and if this is approved and goes forward, that's fine. I hope we're just given a little more notice, a little more input, a little more chance to have some say, because I do feel that -- I know signs went up, but it was around the holidays, and we're novices. We don't know what's going on. So just kind of wanted -- do you have anything to add to that?
My name is Paul McCullough. I was actually at the previous Planning Commission and the Architectural Review Commission meetings, and I actually was kind of surprised tonight when Director Holsman said that this proposal included both lots one and two, the two buildings, I believe. I thought what would --
There are a memento for the two. So I can explain?
Right. That is new to me, and I've been at the last two meetings, in that Lot One, right on the corner of Roosevelt and Nickelway, was, I believe, not mentioned or not fully expanded upon at the previous two meetings. I also would like to -- I'm wondering about the village ordinances regarding the hours of operation of a drive-through restaurant and the rest of the ten-acre site. Will there also be restrictions on deliveries, delivery trucks with loud-beeping backup horns early in the morning, and/or trash removal early in the morning and/or late at night? This was, I don't believe, mentioned at any of the previous meetings, the hours of actual operations of these sites. So it's not just the Panera Bread, but obviously, moving forward, there's going to be potential for further development of the site, both in Lot One, which was mentioned tonight, but potentially, should the developers receive inquiries, I would imagine that the other five lots would be open for development as well, all of which will greatly impact all the residents in the area.
I'm happy to respond to some of those questions, and if I miss some, let me know. So the property is existing zoned commercial office, and it's being rezoned, the whole site, all ten acres, to commercial, more like a general commercial, so C4 to C3.
So is the entire?
It's being rezoned, but we're only approving development of one lot at this time, which is the Panera Bread. So there was a traffic study conducted, and the village did hire its own traffic consultant to review the results of the traffic study that was prepared by the developer. And I'm happy to share that information with you. You can come and make an appointment. We can go through all of the plans and the proposal. The issue related to noise, the village does have regulations in its ordinance regarding lighting and noise, and should there be any concerns about that, we would follow up on that with the business owners once they were in place. Regarding the question of lots one and two, so what's happening tonight is we're giving preliminary planned unit development approval for the entire ten-plus acres, but we're only giving final planned development review approval for Lot Two, Panera Bread. So anything else that's gonna happen on this property has to go back for Plan Commission public hearings before anything can happen. So Lot One is proposed to have a building on it. We're not sure what it will be or who the tenant will be, but if they do, you know, when they find a tenant, they will have to go back for -- before the Plan Commission, the Architecture Review Commission, for the appropriate hearings, and then back before the Village Board. So there will be notification of that in advance, and let's see, restricted restrictions on to --
I do have concerns when you say notification. I think there are a lot of people in the area, a lot of the townhome owners, who did not realize the extent of this, and I think, you know, once the initial property goes in, it's probably gonna be easier and easier to get approval on subsequent properties. So I just would ask the trustees to consider, given all the vacant lots already in Glen Ellen, if, you know, if this is really something that should happen. And again, I'm sorry, I realize this is late. I did not have information previously, and I love Panera, but, you know, I don't want to live necessarily that close to what could cause potential problems with the neighborhood.
We -- I understand you did talk to our planner, John Sterrett, today. We've looked into that issue related to notifications, and I think he mentioned we did have that corrected. So any future notifications, we'll get one. And I don't know if there were any other questions that I missed.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? So we'll open it up to trustee questions.
Could you just comment on the notice that was provided to the residents, the method that was undertaken, and how that was handled?
So state statute and village code require three types of notification: a sign on the property between fifteen and thirty days prior to the public hearing, a notice in the newspaper, also fifteen to thirty days prior to the public hearing, and mail delivery to everybody within 250 feet of the property. We overnotice with our mail delivery, can go 350 feet. We -- with our mailings, we pull all of our data from DuPage County taxpayer record information, and we update our GIS annually. So there was a hiccup with, from what we understand, there was a handful of homeowners who didn't get the letter notice, but the other two notice requirements were met.
When you say a handful, do you have an idea on what that number is?
Nine.
There's only 24 in the --
Nine out of 24 did not receive notice, notification. And that's just our development. There's other developments in the area, too.
All the others, as far as I'm aware, did receive.
Is that nine out of 24 is an accurate count by your understanding?
Not all of the 24 in the development were required. They weren't within the 250 or 350-foot buffer. So about three-quarters of the development are within the circumference.
Stacy, can we email if they request, you know, as I said, it'll be burdensome for us to be able to email them if they don't get paper mail. A lot of times, people don't tend to that as much as we always do.
We don't have access to their email addresses unless they provide them to us. We have not, in the past, we have, you know, at any one time, we approve sixty developments a year. At any one time, we're probably handling review of twenty. And we haven't collected lists of email addresses to notify people just in case we miss. There's no state obligation for us to do it, but we, if people call and request information from us via email, we absolutely respond to that.
Okay, and I believe I have seen this on our village website. I mean, it might be a good thing to monitor and to pass out, you know, to the neighbors, especially if you, I don't know if you said you were on the board, but, you know, again, we try to be as transparent as possible, and of course, follow all the guidelines that were referred to.
Stacy, is, pardon me, is it safe to assume that the mail notification that goes out is merely noticing the public hearing and not the details of the development?
We try to put a little bit more information than the basic details, which is required by state law. So we do put information in there about the basic proposal of what's being proposed, and we go above and beyond that and usually include a site.
Thank you.
Stacy, there's a couple, another development that's, I think, a little closer to this townhouse, where the Starbucks and Chipotle and Jersey Mike's is, right? That's just directly south of this property?
So the subdivision that they're talking about is Kingsbrook Glen, yes? It's at the southwest corner of Taft and Nickel.
Do we have complaints at all about any trucks, deliveries, trash, hours in any of the facilities? I know within that area, there have been --
No.
Do we have any guidelines?
They would come to my department, and we haven't.
Is there any problem, can I ask the public? Any problems with those trucks?
My unit we have is directly on that corner. The only problem we have is with the ambulances that sneak up and don't turn their sirens on until they're right behind our house, coming from the fire department just down the street along Taft. But in terms of noise at Chase Bank, it's a pretty quiet neighborhood.
But the Jersey Mike's, the Jersey Mike's that would be delivering, I would assume, supplies, I don't know if they do it to the front or the back. I know Starbucks and Chipotle, probably front deliveries. I'm just curious if there's anything in the back there that bothers you to compare to this?
I personally have not heard that, but I have heard some of my neighbors who are closer to that end, like sort of right behind where the trash removal is from Jersey Mike's, and they do hear it more often than we do. But I'm not sure if we always have heard it. Oh, and if I could make a comment regarding the notice that was sent around, I actually did receive one, and I did mention this to the director, is that what we received was a plat of a ten-acre site that was said to be divided into seven lots, and that on one of those lots would be a Panera. And it wasn't until I got to the meeting on December 8th that I actually found out where that Panera Bread was relocated, which of the seven lots. So I did receive a notification, but I don't know whether or not the actual notification received was all that informative as to where the site for development was going to be for that particular lot. So should other lots be developed? Lot One is on the corner, the other five lots on that ten-acre site. I've requested previously whether or not a better outline of what is being discussed could be passed along to the neighbors.
Sorry, a couple of questions. So you said we did a traffic study. I assume that met the requirements?
Yes.
For what we're trying to do. You also said there were some regulations around noise?
Mm-hmm.
And time. What are they? I mean, can they use the, can you do a takeout order at one in the morning, and the person's talking out of the speaker of the takeout, or?
So the noise restrictions relate, are typical and common in communities, and it relates to decibel levels. So we get complaints related to various noise-related issues we have throughout the village, and what we do is we require the property owner to hire someone with a sound meter to go out and take measurements to prove that they are meeting village code regulations.
So it's all around decibel levels, not time?
Right. There are construction hours. There are, we don't have any delivery restrictions related to times unless they are part of the approval of a planned unit development. And usually, that, those come along with grocery stores where the deliveries happen at all times of night, and then sometimes there'll be some restrictions on delivery times, or the, where delivery drop-off zones are.
And with regards to the Lot One, Lot Two, we're approving Lot Two.
Right. That's the lot on the screen that's shown.
Will there be some work done on Lot One in terms of parking lot or infrastructure?
Nothing at this time.
It's all Lot Two, then?
Yes. And one other question that just came to my mind that was asked that I didn't answer is at this time, the developer anticipates that the five remaining buildings will continue to be office at this point. I mean, certainly down the road, something could happen, but I believe they've invested in some of these buildings and brought them, made some improvements, and at this point for the near and indefinite future, that's what they're planning to do with those buildings.
And just to clarify, trustee Kenwood, the demo is gonna happen on Lot One as well, but no improvements will be added?
So, yeah, the two buildings that are here will be taken down.
Right, okay.
Is it planned to develop, at least to rough in Lot One from a parking perspective?
They cannot.
Is it gonna, they can't do anything? So it's just gonna be dirt?
Yeah. So what we've got for Lot One is a preliminary site plan. It doesn't really show what will be developed there. When they come in for final approval, that's when they have to have some sort of concept of what will be built.
So it's be dirt?
It's just gonna be dirt. Well, they'll have to seed it if they don't do anything with it right away. It'll be grass.
If there's no future plans at this time supposedly to develop those other lots, then why, why rezone them all?
What we're doing is we're re-subdiving everything and rezoning it to be consistent. So the uses that are in those buildings are permitted under either C4 or C3. So rather than just rezone a tiny piece of it, we're rezoning it, and it could allow the future redevelopment.
I think the homeowners would be more comfortable if parcels, if possible, could be rezoned. I mean, once that entire tract of land is rezoned commercial, it's kind of too late to put the brakes on anything that's gonna happen there.
The petitioners have requested the rezoning. The Plan Commission reviewed the request and thought it was appropriate and recommended approval.
What's the significant difference between the three and four? Just one is more general?
So C4 just permits office uses. C3 permits the whole scope of commercial-type uses, restaurants, retail.
So it's a broader scope?
And offices. Yeah, broader scope.
Want further?
Sure.
You know, given that, it seems there's been an acknowledgement that there's been a bit of a hiccup, if you will, in the notice, can we say that we've complied with the statutory notice requirements that we're obligated to give? And I don't know if that's a question that you can answer, or the village attorney can answer, or whether that can be answered at this particular time, but I'm curious as to whether we're in compliance, basically, with what we're obligated to do.
From what I'm hearing this evening, I have something of a question about whether notice is appropriate or has was given appropriately. I know that notice was mailed to the last-known property owners of this property.
Which was the developer.
Right. Now, I'm hearing, I mean, notice is an important.
Which developer was that?
The developer of the --
Kingsworth Glen?
Yes.
He hasn't had anything to do with the property for four years?
I know, but based on the information that we had in our system, he was the owner, so he did mail something for those properties.
But didn't you say that things were sent out to the DuPage County taxes?
No, we use the DuPage County taxpayer of record, record information that we draw from. We draw from it on a periodic basis, so our information hadn't been updated.
In four years?
We've since corrected the issue related to that. There was some sort of glitch with that development.
What I would suggest as, when resolving this particular issue with respect to zoning, to, I suggest we dot our i's and cross our t's and conduct another public hearing. I would want to research whether we can just handle that here. I mean, essentially, what we've heard tonight is, in the type of information that we would hear in public hearing, I would suggest we put it over until the next meeting date, making sure that we have re-noticed to the folks that live in this development, in that development. You know, I don't think we, I don't think, as I said here right now, that we need to send it back to the plan commission to conduct a hearing. But I need to research that to make sure that's the case. Otherwise, I would say that, to be safe, and I would think from the developer's standpoint, rather than risking the possibility of having an invalid zoning process take place here at the board, that we defer at least that portion of tonight's deliberation to a date after another public hearing would be conducted.
So are we, do you feel we're in violation of notice? Or, I mean, I heard there are three types that we have to give. Are we required to give three of three, or how does that work?
Well, we are required to give those three types of notice. And it doesn't have to be personal service. It could be by mail. I see one gentleman, the gentleman spoke, he's, he's got notice, so it's not really to address any questions he might have because he had the opportunity to go to the, to the hearing and say something. I'm just talking about making sure that we've complied perfectly with the law here. And I would hate to see us kind of slough one through and then have the developer faced with some sort of a zoning challenge in a year after the developers knocked down two buildings and invested a significant amount of money into the project. I mean, you, you might ask them how they feel about that, about that prospect. We're talking about three weeks would be the minimum amount of time. Fifteen days, actually, from the point of notice to another hearing until that hearing takes place. In the meantime, you've had significant input. I would say regardless of the zoning, demolition permits could be applied for, and nothing will happen in this project until demolition takes place of the buildings that are there. So the process will move along. And I don't know that putting, calling for another public hearing would slow things down. I'd be happy to hear any input from the developer on that concept. But from a purely safety standpoint and making sure that we're, we're good to go, that's what I would suggest.
Great, yes. I'm not sure I'm fully understanding. Are you saying it has to be re-noticed to everyone that has received notice and those who didn't, or just those who didn't?
Well, since the public hearing was concluded, I would say we should send the letters to the same group plus twelve or nine on the new, for a new hearing date.
And how many days notice do we have to give prior to the hearing date exactly?
So we need to publish at least fifteen days before a public hearing, and we need to get it to the newspaper about a week prior to the publication. So we need about.
And the hearing has to take place within thirty?
Yes.
Thirty days.
First meeting in February.
And is it possible to grant the demolition permit moving forward?
Yes. So no, anybody can apply for and receive a building permit for a demolition of a building regardless of any, you know, doesn't require any special uses, village board approvals or commission approvals. So if they would like to apply for the demolition permit, they could apply for that and be issued that.
I think, is it the consensus of the board or what are the thoughts? I, you know, I want to dot the i's and cross the t's here. I want to say I'm very supportive of this process. I, you know, I understand that there is some impact here, your subdivision. I also know when your subdivision was built, that was a very, you know, fiercely occupied. I had my office in there as well. As we review these type of situations, we look to what's in the betterment of the 27,500 residents in town. And even though there's emptiness in Dominick's, part of the reason that there's emptiness is because there isn't development across the street. And part of the reason there isn't development across the street and the hardship that displaces on the typical residents as far as the loss of sales tax. And even if Panera decided that this would become troublesome and they decided to, to move into one of the new developments in either Lombard or Wheaton, it's a bit of a competitive atmosphere. And we always want to take into considerations what the impacts will be. You know, what's reasonable for Roosevelt Road development, what's expected by the typical resident in Glen Elan for Roosevelt Road development. So we most certainly want to work with you to make sure that we, we reduce impacts as much as possible. But I think it's reasonable to assume, and I want to stay in very supportive of this process moving forward. I, if nobody, so I just merely pull this from the agenda tonight for we, we don't need to take any vote or any formal action at that point. Or should we take some, I mean, it's unfortunate, you know, we endeavor to apply with state code. I think that, I don't want to see a challenge either, if you even think remotely think there's a challenge. I think that the public notification, both in the paper, electronically on our website and the signage shows due diligence. I'd be, I would initially be comfortable moving forward, but I understand your hesitation. And the board wants to agree to allow for one more public hearing. Tim, do you have a thought on that?
If that's what we're being advised, I would go along with that.
I agree. I'm generally supportive of this as well, and I believe that the, did you guys develop the lot where Chase is through to Starbucks?
No, we didn't.
Okay. And, but I think that development was in before Kingsbrook went in, wasn't it, Stacy?
Yes.
You know, so again, it was one of those things where, I mean, you bought the property and, you know, so it's, there's got, you know, but again, we certainly, as our mayor said, you know, we certainly want to address anything with noise and garbage and that type of thing. We are all residents as well, so.
I think together we can work for what the most positive result is. Nobody, we're as concerned about what goes in there, valuations over EAV, even the valuations of your property, but everybody's property in Glen Elan, people that live miles away and on the, on the south and the north edge of town. So, you know, when we're sitting here considering points of view, but I always want, I appreciate you coming out. I appreciate meeting you tonight. I appreciate you taking the time to come to speak.
You agree?
Yeah, I'm very supportive of both the project and the option of opening it up for the residents to get an opportunity to speak their piece. So I'm fine with moving it off to February.
Very supportive of the project, and I think President Demos has articulated well the board's kind of view that working with the residents is important to us. And I think Attorney Matthews' comments about making sure we comply with the law is obviously important, and it benefits everyone, including the developers. So I would certainly follow the recommendations that he's outlined.
Wonderful. So we're just going to pull it from the agenda at this point?
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm sorry about the idiosyncrasy here. Oh, thank you. We're just going to take one minute while you get ready here, Jeff. We're going to take a two-minute recess.
Okay, item G, Village Link Golf Cart Replacement.
Thank you, Mr. President, honorable trustees. Tonight, the first item.
Hang on a second, I think Lee Mark's phone is ringing.
The first item is the proposal to replace the golf cart fleet at the Village Links. And I'll try to go through this quickly. Most of this information is in your packet. I have, however, provided you with two spreadsheets to replace the spreadsheet that was in your packet. There were a couple of typos, and I believe that this, these two spreadsheets that replaced, the one you had, more clearly explains the difference between four-year versus five-year and four-year versus six-year. The golf cart rental at the Village Links is a profitable amenity. It generates over 477,000 in 2016. Over fifty percent of our guests do rent a golf cart that play the Village Links, which is up over prior years. And it accounts for roughly seventeen percent of all of our golf revenues. The most advantageous time to replace the golf cart is every four years. We hope to demonstrate these three points to you, that the most advantageous time is every four years, that the most advantageous method in the long run is purchase versus lease, and that the Yamaha Drive Two with EFI and Quiet Tech technology was the most, is the best option among the three competitors that gave us proposals. We saw proposals from each of the three national golf cart manufacturers. Each of these dealers has a protected sales territory, and that gives them exclusive rights to sell their brand of golf cart in our area. We asked for the best quote, the best price they could give us for the acquisition of ninety-five gasoline-powered golf carts, including the trade-in of the eighty-seven cars we own currently. The quotes were to include options to purchase and to lease. And we gave no really specific specs on the golf carts, other than that they were to be gasoline and that they were to include a list of amenities which I'll provide it. The first reason that it's a good idea to go four years to replace the carts, which we've done since 2008, is the amount of maintenance we can expect to occur in years five and six. The warranty runs out after four years, and in years five and six, we can expect the parts that are listed on your page to start to fail and have to be replaced in the next two years. The parts on the bottom are optional parts. Those are not required for the operation of the golf carts. However, they do largely affect the appearance of the golf carts, which also affects the perceived value our customer has around the golf. The two spreadsheets you have in front of you, first, we looked at what it would cost to replace the carts every four years versus five years. What would be more advantageous? This is on a purchase method. The bottom line in each of the two parts of the spreadsheet show the cumulative net results each year if we replaced every four years and every five years. I ran the numbers all the way through 2033 because that was the first year that we could go apples to apples and show what the cumulative results would be. In 2033, you could show that there's a slight advantage in net income if we replace every four years versus every five years. And that's largely due, or mostly, or all due to the fact that we lose trade-in value in year five and also the added maintenance and labor that we can expect to incur in the fifth year of owning the golf carts. The next spreadsheet shows the same analysis to replace carts every four years versus if we kept, held on to them two more years and replaced them every six years. And again, the results are similar. In 2025 would be the first year that we would have to replace them in either scenario, the first common year. And you can see that the cumulative results of replacing them every four years is about $49,000 better than if we waited and replaced them every six years. Again, we lose trade-in value and we incur maintenance costs. The assumptions are that the golf carts would increase fifty dollars every year. The labor, or the maintenance and the labor include the parts that were not optional. So that would be the minimum maintenance labor that we would incur in those two years. The, we assume that the revenue would stay flat for the duration of the analysis and that we know that the trade-in. we know that the trade-in value, based on the recommendation from all three manufacturers, between $300 and $400 per year, and most common being $350. The four-year-old cart fleet is showing its age. Each of our 87 carts has been averaged, has been rented an average of 1,495 times and has gone 7,000 miles over those four years. Customers come to relate to Village Links with the quality golf experience. Replacing carts more often is a great benefit to our guests, and they appreciate it. And then with the growth in the popularity of golf outings, we are experiencing a golf cart shortage with increasing regularity, leaving our customers frustrated and confused. And that's the first thing I said about increasing our fleet from 87 to 95. We feel that the extra eight carts will relieve the majority of these shortages. So, like, some pictures of the current condition of our carts. 80%, of our carts currently have some sort of a tear or a hole in the seat bottoms. These are obviously, or look like they had been done with either cigarettes or cigars left on the seats by customers, hopefully. This is, this is common in almost all of our carts, just the up and down of 1,500 customers, some 50 times around, up and down. The corners wear out and they start to crack, and the holes get bigger. Seat cushions are $125 each to replace, so if we replaced all 87, that would be $11,000 investment to keep the carts in year five and six. Each season produces more and more scratches and dents. Only about 30 or 35% of our carts are experiencing this now, but we can expect that to grow in years five and year six. The rear collar replacement cost is $900 plus labor if we were to replace those. This is the front collar, some of the scratches, another picture of the scratches, the front collar is $650 plus labor. So you can see the maintenance costs if we were to present our carts with the quality that our customers expect, and things that we want to, the way we want to present our carts, that it becomes quite costly once the warranties run out and once, and the longer we keep our carts. The second point I wanted to demonstrate is that it's always, in our position, and we happen to be in a favorable cash position, it's always more economical for us to lease carts than it is to purchase. I mean, I'm sorry, always more economical purchase versus lease. And these are the three proposals that were given by Club Car Yamaha and Easy Go, and you can see in each instance, they offered three different options, purchase with our trade-in, lease to own, which is basically a financed purchase, and then a straight lease where we would actually sell them our lease, and then we would lease the carts with no trade-in value or no residual value at the end of the lease.
Jeff, can that focus any better off our audience at home? I mean, it's hard for us to read it, I don't know if that-
This is in your-
We have it right here, but I'm just concerned for our pub people.
So in each instance, you could see the straight lease looks like a very good option and, which would be next year, the first year of the lease. And I'll pick on Yamaha because Club Car is a little outrageous in their lease pricing. But Yamaha is the cart that we are proposing. We could get the, we could get the 95 cars for $33,060 in 2017. But at the end of the lease period, when it's up in 48 months, we would expect to pay $302,760 for the same lease, and we wouldn't have any equity, and we would continue on with that every four years. So losing the equity ends up costing us over the 12-year period. If we purchased, we would have spent $573,000, and if we did the straight lease, it would have been $638,000. And the assumptions we made here is that the lease prices would remain the same over the 12-year period, and we know that's not true, we know that the interest rates will change over that period. And for, and for analysis purposes, was done only on 87 carts, didn't include the additional eight carts, just so we could do apples-to-apples, so I could show you the difference in pricing between purchasing and leasing.
Interesting question, so the Yamaha straight lease, you say $33,060 for 2017. What are the costs for '18, '19, '20? Is that the same rate per year?
Well, that would be $33,000 spread over the four years, so that would be 24 payments, $33,000 divided by 24. Payments would be extremely low because we're selling off our fleet at $270,000. And the other ones are the same way.
What's the lease without the trade-in? That's the 208?
That would be the 302,760 if we didn't have anything to trade in. And the thing about the lease, the good thing about the lease is if we were in a cash flow problem, we could spread that over six months each year, so that's, that's a four-year lease spread over six months, so we would pay May through October. We wouldn't have to pay through the months that we were not generating much revenue.
So that's over half of the revenue of the carts for the lease costs? If I'm doing my math right?
Correct, for a four-year, for the four-year term. So in my, my understanding of leases, and what I've always known about leases, is that they are great if you have to, you can write off the full amount of the purchase in the first year and pay it over four years, and they're also great if you happen to have a cash flow problem and you need cash freed up each month. Village Links is fortunate enough to not have a, currently have a cash flow problem, so that's why we propose the most economical way to purchase these carts, and that's by a straight-out purchase and retaining our value.
Well, with a lease, you can't expense all four years in the first year. You can expense it versus depreciate it, so it becomes a, an expense which is not really relevant to us, but, you know, there, there are some advantages to leasing if you understand just what the fixed cost per month is for owning carts forever. You can budget it, you know, you can understand what it is, and you take the capital investment out of it, just like your renting comment. So you should always consider leases, even if you have money, because there's advantages to leases. You would understand that it costs you X per month with, with a specific escalator to own 95 carts, and that allows you to understand, because if there was some change in the technology, you could see, if there's a change in, in some sort of EPA mandate or the change in technology, your capital investment could dramatically drop with the lease. You're just paying so much fixed per year, you're not owning the carts, you're paying for the use of the cart. So it always should be a consideration. I, I appreciate what you did here, but you really have to look at the budget. I understand you'd re, you'd get that capital to reduce the cost of the lease for years, knowing that after four years, when you get into the new lease, this is your one fixed cost moving forward. So I would assume that at the recommission, you would, you addressed some of this?
We did, talked about this, and the consensus was that the purchase was the better option, but, you know, again, looking for insight from the board as well, and other-
I'd probably be comfortable with the purchase this time, but it shouldn't be a mandate that we purchase. At some point, you can say that it costs me $1,000 a year or $5,000 a year per cart to own carts, and that's the only cost, and that's all the village has to worry about, and they're under warranty, and, and, you know, that should always be something that's considered on a four-year basis. I would, I would expect that you would do a study, a detailed study to understand that, with this being so significant, but-
And we do do that analysis every time we're considering the replacement of the cart fleet, and like I said, if we're in a decent cash position and we can afford to take the lowest, lowest incremental cost or the lowest cumulative cost, then we'll be able to do that. We're fortunate enough to be able to do that.
As long as the assumed trade-in value stays the same. You know, the other, the other risk with the lease is if you dramatically adversely change the condition of the cart, you could be liable for expenses in the cart at the end of the lease. In this case, they're viewing your carts and they're offering you a sum for them in their present condition. You know, many, many times people turn in vehicles in lease or equipment in lease, and there's a, there's an expense associated with it because it's not in the reasonable or customary condition at the end of the, at the end of the period.
Are there any other trustee questions, or?
My gut, and I was opposed to, the last time that we replaced the carts, I, I was told that, you know, years ago, we used to keep the carts for 10 to 15 years. You know, I, I guess, A, I'm surprised at the condition of some of the carts, I would think that some of the holes in the seats and the scuffs that are on the carts, I, I think that my wish would be, would be that they would be better maintained, and A, that would improve the value of them, B, that would make the value of them go up. You know, a lot, a lot of times, as I've heard, some of our municipal equipment, as it's maintained, gets a premium at auctions. So my thought would be to either A, look at leasing them, or B, you know, extend the, especially at this time, extend this purchase out a few years. Yes, we're going to go beyond the warranty period, but they're going to have some resale ability, and part of that's going to determine, or part of that, what's going to determine that is how well your staff takes care of the carts. I don't think it's, it's going to take much effort to, you know, take a buffer and buff out some of those scratches that can be buffed out and replace some of the bad seats. I think we should be doing that anyway, you know, periodically replace these seats. You know, I think that the condition of those carts also reflects, you know, the village. So, you know, when we've had a pinch in our budget, we've asked, you know, the police department to extend the use of their cars for another year or two, or they voluntarily do that, you know, to, to work with us on a budget. You know, we're, we're looking to drive revenues at the links. We've already discussed some things, and I know, I've been talking to Tim, and the commission has talked about maybe putting a pavilion up there where the carts are stored now so that we can, we can handle larger groups. You know, we all have cars that are beyond a warranty period, and, you know, they, they seem to work fine if they're maintained well. So I, I'm generally not supportive of replacing the carts at this time, and I, I think that if we push this off, we could reallocate some of those funds to things that are going to help us drive revenues at the links, but that's my position.
Let me, let me just kind of give a recap of what the recommission discussed, because I, I shared Pete's views about a month ago when we talked about this. I felt that if we were able to extend a couple of years, that we'd be able to take that money and bank it, you know, and be able to invest it and do other things with other capital needs, et cetera. And that's when I, you know, I worked with Jeff, and said, "Let's go out and put a long-term spreadsheet together and, and see what it looks like." And when I did that, I was kind of surprised at the results. I was surprised to see that, you know, when you look at the maintenance, and again, that's, that's a, it's a, it's a dart, you don't know what that's going to be, higher, lower, could be lower, could change these numbers, but based upon the numbers they came up, but I find them to be fairly reasonable. I don't think they're excessive. I think the trade-in value is really something that they got directly from the vendors, how much these depreciate year after year in terms of trade-in. So I was, I was kind of surprised to see that if we held on to these for, you know, two more years, you know, the cost of the, the trade-in value reduction of 70, 60,000, and the increased parts and maintenance of 60,000, $120,000 additional cost to the village was almost half the cost of the carts. So when you really look at it, and that's where that cumulative net position I was trying to see with the cart revenue and replacing them, and I, I think we all agree the carts could go a couple more years. They're not, they're not great, they're not awful. You know, I've been in worse carts, they're, they run pretty well, they, they look okay, they, they could be cleaned up, you could put a little bit of money into them, but I think, Jeff, I'd like you to report what the recommission came back, because I think you've spoken to each recommission member about their view, but I think overall, when we left the recommission in December, it was probably 50/50. But I think after Jeff proposed this, I'll let him give the results, but I, I was able to change my mind, thinking that, I think the staff up there can, can use their time with doing other things than maintaining carts. You know, I have been up there when carts are short, it's not good. You know, we're, we are doing more outings. That's not a, it's not a good way to, to have a client come in and, and not have carts for them. So if these numbers are right, and I think they're pretty accurate, based upon the numbers, I have a hard time arguing against it. And I think the recommission, Jeff, if you could just maybe before the other trustees talk, see what the recommission's poll was on that.
We did discuss this at length in the December meeting, and the recommission asked for a little more information. I provided them with the information that I provided you and asked them for their opinion on number one, should we, should we purchase them? Number two, should we do it in 2017? And number three, should it be the Yamaha EFI cart? And five out of seven, and I did this by email, I did an email poll because it was after the December meeting, five out of seven commissioners responded, and they all, three, all five responded favorably on all three points. They supported all three points.
We do have Brad Broder here, the chairman, if he wanted to talk. If anybody had any questions for him, he's, he's also here in the audience.
Yeah, Brad Broder is the recommission chairman, he could, anyway, any questions for Brad?
Brad, you're supportive of the purchase?
Yes. Now, the full review and the, you know, the financial impact, it makes sense, and, you know, Tim, Tim really kind of sparked this conversation in our last meeting, and we did ask Jeff and his team to go back and pull the information together. He did that right away, and we were satisfied with the information, since it makes right sense.
I have a question, some questions about the analysis. I'm sorry. So I just want to make sure I understand the numbers. You're saying in 2025, we will have squeezed out an additional roughly $50,000 in net results by replacing every four years versus six years?
That's correct, and plus, we get the benefit of three sets of new carts versus just two who have replaced them three times. But 50,000 is correct, around 50,000 net results.
And I noticed in the maintenance for the four-year, there are no maintenance costs at all. Is that because whatever happens to a cart in four years is under warranty? Or, I mean, I would assume, you know, there's a tear in a car, you know, within two years, and it's replaced, and that's something that would be a maintenance item anyway, right?
Right, and this is, and those will occur no matter what. This is additional maintenance that we could expect to incur because the carts are five and six years old.
But Jeff, in, in the four years when they're under warranty, what kind of maintenance cost do you incur at the links to maintain them?
In the initial year, it starts very low, and it increases every year, as you can imagine, as the carts get worn out. We average, what is it, Chris, about $8,000 a year? About $8,000 a year is the average. It starts low and then builds up to about maybe $10,000.
And that's, that's either way, whether they're under warranty or if they're out of warranty.
Correct. Not everything is under warranty for four years, and certain things we have to replace, and we do, our mechanics do that.
So that's where I'm just going to the analysis. Does that mean we should be burdening the four-year with a $24,000 maintenance cost that's not in here, which reduces the $50,000 net result? Or are we assuming that that $24,000 is also in the sixth year and reflected in these maintenance numbers?
Well, the 20, if we keep it the fifth year, the fifth year, we can expect to incur another $26,000 in parts and labor. In this, in the sixth year, we can expect to incur another $33,000 as some of the parts that are more expensive start to fail.
But Jeff, that $26,500 in 2017, which is the six-year replacement on the bottom of that spreadsheet, there's an additional $8,000 roughly you spend every year anyway on top of, that's just kind of-
As an average over the four years. Like I say, in the first year, it's about $3,000, and it continually rises as the carts age and parts start to wear.
And I, and I understand that that's, that's not included in here because that's going to be the same in year three of the four-year plan or year three of the five-year plan?
It'll be the same in every-
So you're saying it's a, it's a wash?
It's a wash.
That's what I wanted to make sure of. And on the, do we get complaints about the carts from customers? I mean, outside of the shortage, the shortage I think should be addressed, but do we get people complaining, "Hey, my cart was dinged or scratched or torn," or?
I don't think we get a lot of complaints that are verbal complaints. I think it does impress upon the influence of the opinion that people have of our facility. If we keep it in good repair, they have a better feeling about our facility. If it's not in good repair, they have a little bit more negative feeling.
And then, I don't even know, but do we have a survey around the feeling of our, of the links from people, or do we do a formal?
I would guess it's probably pretty good. I think we are, if we're not the leader, we are among the leaders in rounds played of all the public facilities in the area. I know-
And, sorry. Okay. And just out of curiosity, gasoline versus electric? Is there, we, it sounds like we chose gasoline. Is there a rationale for that?
The main reason we chose gasoline is because an electric fleet would require a building to store the charging units, which we don't currently have. We would have to build something to house the charging units. We store our carts outside where we could not house the, the charging units. Each, each cart has an individual unit to charge it every night.
Okay.
We don't have that.
And is that, is there a, is there a business case to switching from gasoline to electric if you build a building or that's not, is electric more expensive and not worth it?
The main, the costs to maintain are pretty similar because every few years you have to replace the batteries, you have to maintain the batteries. There's six batteries, I believe, in an electric cart and one in a gasoline cart. Batteries are roughly $800 per set to replace.
So you're saying?
There's been analyses done and there, it kind of flips back and forth.
Didn't you say, Jeff, the electric had less trade-in value because the set?
That's the consensus now that in, in today's market, the EFI carts, especially these new ones with the QuietTech technology have a higher trade-in value than the electrics.
But that's a, that's a multi, that's a million dollar investment for power and buildings and it's just outside the scope of.
That's curious.
Time.
Thank you.
My question is, you have assumed revenue would stay flat throughout, from now through 2025.
And I don't believe that will happen, but I assume that for.
Right. I would assume it won't happen. I mean, I would take it that with the quality, A, being able to offer a higher quality cart would give you at least the flexibility to increase the cost of the cart rental at some point along this continuum such that revenue, you might be able to have more revenue.
And I would expect that to go up and just for, for analysis, to keep them just flat for both years, we just kept them flat, just to.
Jeff, we did have an increase this year, right?
An increase in 2017.
So it did increase the cart fees as.
So it went.
How, what was the prior increase? How long had it gone before?
Our prior increase, I believe, was in 2009.
Okay. So you go about five years flat and then you increase?
Whatever we feel like the market is going to be able to bear as far as pricing.
All right. Thank you. Any additional questions?
Um, the one advantage, and then the last thing I wanted to talk to you about is why we chose the Yamaha. There's a list there of the benefits of each of the three models. Yamaha clearly has the most, the two, the three, the first three are the most significant. Number one is significantly less engine noise. The biggest complaint from golfers on gas carts is the noise that it produces. The Yamaha is unbelievably quieter than the other two carts, certainly the carburetor engine of the Easy Go and, and also on the club car. It has the highest rated EFI fuel efficiency, 45 miles per gallon. That'll save us approximately $2,000 a year over the X, over the Easy Go cart and about a thousand dollars a year over the club car. And it retains the highest trade-in value.
And the quietness is good for the residents around the golf course.
They, they enjoy that. Just to give you an idea of what the Yamaha QuietTech is, 60.5 decibels, how it compares to the other two, and of course, how it prepares to a croaking frog. And then, and then there's a chart down there that shows you the savings we can expect to realize in gasoline. So thank you for your time. That's my presentation.
I'm sorry, on the, on the gasoline then, so this analysis won't show, I guess if I move to the newer carts, I'm going to get an efficiency every year in gas that.
They have, they have improved in the last three times that we've purchased new carts. I'm not sure that that will continue. Hopefully, they're trying to figure out ways to make it more fuel efficient every year. I would think that would be a selling point for them.
I'm just concerned that, you know, maybe this hasn't really been fitted enough and so, and I want to just offer that if you needed somebody to test drive this, I would take it on personally as my, my, you know, contribution to the project, so.
It can be among the first.
And Jeff, just again, there's, we're waiving competitive bidding because there's only one vendor in the area that is allowed to sell us these carts, correct?
Correct.
So we cannot go out for competitive bidding.
We couldn't get a quote from the guy up in Wisconsin or out in California or somewhere else, the protected territories.
Have you ever looked into what the cost is to extend the warranty? Do they offer that? If we were going to consider purchase here, but look to get a five-year because it seems like the analysis is all based on it being out of warranty. You know, if, if we approve this tonight, I'd, I'd like you to find that out and get those numbers back to manager Franz and myself for just a reconsideration.
Okay, we'll do that.
And if that warranty has to be paid upfront or if that warranty can be paid just prior to the end of the warranty, many extended warranties just need to go in place prior to the end of the factory warranty. So let's just do a little bit of research on that. If we wanted to consider what might be, we buy them, but we want to go five years and we take a look at what that additional fifth year warranty is and we, we rework this and we do a test period of five years to see how that is, if that additional warranty could be negotiated into the deal or if that warranty is very reasonable in cost, just to see. At least look at that.
Do we know if we could purchase an extended warranty now?
I do not know that if that's offered. I've never had that offered.
I just extended the warranty on my daughter's cart and it was like $1,200 for another three years, you know, so I, I.
Well, let's just, let's just look into it. Any additional questions or comments on this?
I'm sorry, I do have one more. I should have asked it earlier. I apologize for my inefficiency. With the maintenance here, these numbers, did this assume all 87 carts? So if I got $20,000 in maintenance, that assume, that assume I'm replacing all the covers for the 87 carts or you just say, hey, I'll have to replace a certain percentage of them?
There's a, this in your packet there shows what we would expect in year five and six. So over the course of two years, we would expect to place, replace 87 of a lot of the different parts.
So it is all of them, it's just spread over.
Some in the fifth year, some in the sixth year.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this, on this item? May I have a motion, please?
Mr. President, bring forth a motion to waive competitive bidding and award a contract to Harris Golf Cars, Inc. of Sugar Grove, Illinois to purchase 95 Yamaha Drive II-EFI with QuietTech gasoline golf cars in the amount of $231,725, including the trade-in of 87 used 2013 Yamaha YDRA-EFI golf cars to the expense of the Village Links/River Reserve 22 fund.
Second.
Second, any further deliberations? May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee O'Shea.
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Ladisack.
No.
Trustee Sennett.
Hi.
Thank you. Jeff, I would like you to consider, you know, the, what trustee Ladisack had talked about, the, the repair and buffing and getting, getting on a program. There is a vinyl guy that'll come out and fix those cigarette burns. If you have 10 carts at a time, it's done very frequently in the automotive industry. We have it done at our place. It's, it's not that expensive, you don't need to replace a seat, but that might be a program that you want to get into once a month, have a guy out. It's like the paintless dent removal guy, he comes out and will fix those cigarette burns for you and it's, it's actually a, a good process.
I appreciate that. We do some of that, the bigger ones, we obviously, the cracks and the terrors are not fixable. But the cigarette burns are definitely, we do some of that.
It's very disturbing to look at that. I think it's good to have that program.
And I'd like to find out too, that whether or not we can extend the warranty on the existing carts.
Well, you're, he's going to do that.
Right. All right.
Well, you're up there again on item eight.
Okay, so, thank you. The next item is the replacement of five pieces of heavy equipment that we use to maintain our golf course and grounds. As a municipality, I will note that we are part of the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance. It's a group out of Arizona that collects all the bids from all the companies and collectively they get the best pricing. We pass that along to all the members and the membership is free. We just have to sign up for it. We are currently members. So all of these items that before you reflect the NI, National IPA pricing with the exception So we are in need of a fairway aerator and I've got Chris Pecaric with me who is a man who uses these, who maintains them, who knows the condition of them a lot better. So I'm going to have him help me answer any questions that you might have. The primary use of the fairway aerator is to maintain 45 acres of our bent grass fairways and tees, solid, tiny spiking we do throughout the season. Now, the one we currently have was purchased in 1992. It is no longer operational. We have found that the parts that are needed to replace that and make it operational are no longer available on the market. There is only one large area aerator in the market that has the capability to address the maintenance needs of our facility. It's a Toro Pro Core 1298 Fairway Aerator and at National IPA pricing, it's $31,533.67 and we feel like this is, we know this is the best price that we could have gotten for this piece of equipment. The fairway sprayer, sprayer is used to apply fertilizers. The current one we have is a toe behind unit, has limited capabilities. It was purchased in 2000. We could also use this unit to spray the green and the tee turf in an emergency. With the limited capability of the one that we have, we are suggesting that we replace this. There are two options on the market, the Toro 5800, the cost of $52,837 and the SmithCo Spray Star, a cost of $46,590. Both are suitable for our needs. We're suggesting that we purchase the SmithCo Spray Star 3800 at a cost of $46,590. We are also in need of a green and tee aerator. This, of course, aerates our greens. We do this, we are now proposing to do this twice a year on the greens. We do it at least once a year on the tees. The current model that we have was purchased in 1997. We have two of them, one was purchased in 1999. Both have come to the end of their useful lives or costing us, I believe, more time to, and breakdowns and repairs than they are useful for us. So we're proposing that we replace this. There's only one on the market that is suitable for our needs. It's a Toro Pro Core 648 Aerator, which is also available at National IPA pricing, $22,654. The work haulers that we are proposing to use are also used at, a little bit at Village Green and also at Panfish Park to haul things around the golf course and they have a variety of uses. The first, the, the two that we are suggesting to replace, one was purchased in 1995 and one was purchased in 1996. The runtimes on those are over 4,500 hours respective, or both of them. Both of them could be traded in. There are three possible replacements, all offered by the Burris Equipment Company. We propose the Cushman Gas 1200X Work Haulers for a cost of $8,532 each. These purchases will be paid out of our fund, the Village, our, the Village Links Cash And we ask that we waive the competitive bidding. And I will ask for, Chris Pecaric, come up and help us with any questions that you might have about any specific equipment, what it's used for and why it needs to be replaced.
Jeff, before, before Chris comes up, just had a question. In our, in our, could hear it, this mentioned that this, these five pieces were proposed to be replaced in '15 and '16 in our budgets, but never were. Just curious, I mean, we was trying to extend the life, what was the reason we didn't do anything with them back then?
We thought in those years, we saw that they could be put off another year. Chris found a way to keep them going for another year. But I think if, at this point, they've come to a point where the breakdowns and the time spent on repairing them has become burdensome.
Then why were they left out of the '17 budget?
Pardon me?
Why were they left off the '17 budget that we just completed?
Uh, the '17, because the '17 budget had the carts on them, it had a greens roller on it and it had a plotter on it.
I guess what I'm saying is during the 2017 budget, did you just assume that we would get another year out of these and now we've just changed our mind in the last three months?
He was trying to get a purchase, I think by the end of '16, it just didn't happen, right?
And we were trying to get the money encumbered for '17. We were going to try to get it purchased and, and we didn't put the packets together and didn't get the.
So you're really just asking us to extend this into '17?
About a couple of months.
Well, extended from '15 to '16 and now again to '17.
But we're going to buy it in '17.
We're going to try to buy it in '17. That's our recommendation.
Just speaking again to the, to the board here, I can, I don't know about the sprayers. I don't know about, I know the fairway, fairway aerators, I've seen that they don't do a great job, Chris. I see chunks sometimes and they sometimes don't fully dissolve, so I don't know if that's a problem with the machine and that's why we'll do a better job of aerating the fairways than the ones that you've used previously.
The 1992 unit hasn't been working for two years. Parts just aren't available. The technology on the aerator that we're proposing is 100 times better than the 1992 unit.
Okay. And then the sprayer, I really can't comment on, but the, the green aerator, I think is absolutely necessary. The greens, it's one of my, I've been talking with Chris and Jeff for, since I've started the board and the greens at, at the links, I think are the most important part of the golf course for those that play golf. One of the questions I've, I've asked year after year and Chris has brought in some USGA specialists on this and they do recommend aerating the greens, I think twice a year, right, Chris? We've only done it once a year and we, my view is that we need to follow what the USGA says to, to make sure these greens last. We put a lot of money into the course 10 years ago, 12 years ago, whatever it is now, and we need to make sure that we can continue to have top quality conditions at the course. So, you know, I, I think the, you know, the work haulers and the, the sprayer, I really can't speak to, but certainly aerators, I, I think it's been, if your commitment to do this twice a year, which I've been pushing for, for four years, I'm happy to hear that because I think that's going to help the condition of those greens. And I, I think that's why you aerate them, right, is to get rid of the organic material and fill them with sand so they, they harden up a little bit and they're not as soft and wet. So, you know, from my perspective, from a golf perspective, I think those two are absolutely necessary and, you know, again, I, the other two, if they're required, it seems like, and they've been approved before, I don't, I don't have an issue with.
Will this allow you to aerate them twice a year and is it your intention to aerate it twice a year? Because I don't want to imply that we're buying this and then it's going to allow it to be, it's going to be aerated twice a year.
Well, I'll tell you what I was told initially, and Chris corrected me, I'm wrong, that they didn't like to do it twice a year because it disrupts play. And I don't think, you know, you have, everyone aerates greens and, and it's just a nature of golf course maintenance. So I was always, well, you know, you, you publish it, people know it's coming, people make reservations, you say, hey, we're aerating next week, just so you know, we're discounting the fees. But there certainly could be a drop off of some players for that time, but it is an inconvenience to golfers, there's no doubt, but it's something that has to be done. So, but Chris, I'll, that's what I was told and you can certainly answer.
Right. That's correct. We will be aerating a second time. We do it in October and then we're going to do it this spring in, sometime in April, depending on weather conditions. This unit is also used for maintenance throughout the year. It does venting and spiking, it does other things that aren't as obtrusive as aeration. And it'll just give us great capability to help improve the greens. It's a key piece.
What are you doing to improve the sand traps that I'm in?
Stay out of them.
Deflectors.
We actually rebuilt all the nine-hole sand traps last year. We had a lot of complaints, so we took care of that.
I assume that based on the age of these pieces of equipment, that trade-in value is probably nonexistent.
Correct.
Is there scrap value for them?
Well, we trade them in and we get a few hundred dollars on the work carts. I mean, it's, we have no use for them, they're not, both, both pieces aren't running. They have engines that need to be replaced. that need to be replaced, frames that are cracked, beds that are rusted out. So just to get them off the property, you get a couple hundred bucks.
Thanks.
Does it make any sense to put those in an auction or in one of these auction auctions?
No, we've talked to Frank before about it and we'd get fewer dollars and they'd have to be towed. They can't be driven.
Are these for 2016 models or 17 models?
17.
Okay. And these quotes, some of these quotes were from one of 16 and the other quotes are from 10 of 16. And they say 30-day, good for 30 days. So these numbers are good for 2017 models at the prices we're being given?
Correct. It says 30 days. That's just the standard on the form. But the National IPA, it's good through the end of 2017.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No matter when we purchase it.
Is there any way you can retrofit the old golf carts to be the work carts?
Well, really, the work carts are just glorified golf carts. They have a heavier suspension.
Any additional questions?
The only question I had, Chris, was that, you know, you're looking to go with the SmithCo sprayer instead of the Toro. And all the other equipment that we're purchasing from the air, at least the aerators, are Toro. Is there an advantage, even though it's slightly more money, to have all Toro equipment from a servicing perspective and maintenance perspective? If it doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter. My personal preference, you know, some people like Chevy, some like Ford. I like Toro. But the SmithCo Spray Star is good enough to do the job. So for a few thousand less, we'll go with that.
But there's no savings in terms of maintenance to have?
No, because there's no identical parts that can be shared or stocked.
Okay. I agree. I wouldn't, at this price point, I wouldn't be opposed to going with all Toro if it was a, if there was some advantage to it. I know that you had public works with stocking common filters and things. You like to have one piece over the other from time to time. But as long as you're comfortable. Any additional questions or comments? Are there any public questions or comments on this item? May I have a motion? We can accept a motion for item H.1, 2, and 3.
Mr. President, I bring forth a motion to approve ordinance number 6479, an ordinance amending the budget of the Village of Glen Allen for fiscal year ending December 31, 2017, to provide funds for the Village Link's equipment. Also, a motion pursuant to section 1-10-7 of the Village Code to adopt the competitive bidding procedures of the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance in lieu of the provisions of Chapter 10 on village contracts and approve a contract to purchase one Toro Pro Core 1298 Fairway Aerator for $31,533.67, one SmithCo Spray Star 3180 Fairway Sprayer for $46,590, and one Toro Pro Core 648 Aerator for $22,654.18 to the expense of the Village Link's Reserve/Reserve 22 fund. Lastly, a motion to waive competitive bidding and approve the contract to Burris Equipment of Gillette, Illinois, for the sole source purchase of two Cushman Gas 1200X work haulers for a total cost of $17,064 to the expense of the Village Link/Reserve 22 fund.
Second. Any further deliberations? May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee O'Shea.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee Ladisack.
Yes.
Trustee Sennett.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item I, reminders. Manager Franz.
Two reminders. Our next Village Board Workshop is scheduled for a special day, Tuesday, January 17th, at 2017, at 7:00 PM, in Room 301 of the Glen Allen Civic Center. And the next Village Board meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 23rd, right here in the Galligan Boardroom at 7:00 PM.
Is there any other business?
I'd just like to congratulate Trustee Clark as our Village President pro temp.
Thank you, President Clark.
Second. Yes, I figured there was one.
May I have a motion, Trustee Sennett, to adjourn?
Yes, President. The motion to adjourn to executive session for deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees setting the price for the purchase, sale, or lease of property without returning to open session thereafter.
Second.
Second. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Sennett.
Aye.
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Ladisack.
Yes.
Trustee O'Shea.
Aye.
We are adjourned to executive session.